...that we have tonight in the unlikely event that we need to evacuate the building, please note that there is an exit that way with a lighted red exit sign, also one over here with a lighted red exit sign. You can also exit this way to the right or to the left. Take notice that this public meeting of the Cerebral Board of Education was emailed to the homeless Tribune and Star Ledger in accordance with chapter 231, Public Law, nineteen seventy-five. Further in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash six to ten colon four dash twenty-one, a copy of this notice was posted outside the secretary's office and a copy was also filed with the clerk of the borough of Cerebral. Mr. McIntosh, in honor of your service to our country, would you please lead the board in the Pledge of Allegiance? Please rise.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the republic, to its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible and God as God.
Mr. McIntosh. Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Here. We have about thirty to thirty-five minutes of business that we need to go through. I know why most of you are here. The other piece that I wanted to share with you is due to the large attendance and the board wanting to give everyone who wishes an opportunity to speak tonight, we're going to limit our public participation to two minutes per person so that everyone who wishes to speak will have an opportunity to address the board, and we're only asking that you address the board once in that two minutes. The reason I'm telling you this now is so that I know some of you, especially our students, may not be accustomed to public speaking in this type of forum. If you have brought prepared remarks, you might want to think about highlighting some key points that you want to make during the two-minute time, and you'll have a chance to do that in the next thirty minutes while we conduct the initial part of our meeting. So with that, Mr. DeAndre, would you please review the items that we discussed in the executive session?
This evening in the executive session, under personnel matters included but not limited to agenda items, under negotiations, school calendar, attorney's client privilege, related various legal issues associated with the Cerebral War Memorial High School football.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndre. We have a presentation on the agenda, a relatively brief presentation by our superintendent regarding the New Jersey Quality Singular Accountability Act, or continuum, which is the, basically, the monitoring process that we need to go through, and this is a report to the Board of Education, which is required by state law. Dr. Labby? Yes. Yes. Dr. Labby, if you would take us through your superintendent's report overview. Thank you very much. The board also did receive that email. It came later in the day. I did not have an opportunity to send a response, but you can let your son know that a response will be forthcoming in the morning for that one as well. Anyone else for public? Thank you. Do we need a motion to accept that, Dr. Labby, or is that already on the agenda? Excellent. Approve or mince? Can I have a motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of September sixteen? Move. I have a motion by Mr. Walsh, a second by Mrs. Bloom. Are there any comments or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. DeAndre.
Mr. Bautista?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Dr. Labby, if you would take us through your superintendent's report overview. Thank you very much. The board also did receive that email. It came later in the day. I did not have an opportunity to send a response, but you can let your son know that a response will be forthcoming in the morning for that one as well. Anyone else for public? Thank you very much. The board also did receive that email. It came later in the day. I did not have an opportunity to send a response, but you can let your son know that a response will be forthcoming in the morning for that one as well. Anyone else for public? Thank you very much. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? We'll respond to your question, but you still have a minute left if you have any other comments to make. Okay. Thank you. First of all, I was at the meeting last night. Dr. Labby never indicated the guilt or innocence of any individual, but with regard to the... ladies and gentlemen, with regard to the question about informing the students, Dr. Labby, I'll let you address that because that's an administrative issue.
Everyone was informed.
Thank you. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? We'll respond to your questions, but you still have a minute left if you have any other comments to make. Okay. Thank you. First of all, I was at the meeting last night. Dr. Labby never indicated the guilt or innocence of any individual, but with regard to the... ladies and gentlemen, with regard to the question about informing the students, Dr. Labby, I'll let you address that because that's an administrative issue.
Everyone was informed.
Thank you. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? We'll respond to your questions, but you still have a minute left if you have any other comments to make. Okay. Thank you. First of all, I was at the meeting last night. Dr. Labby never indicated the guilt or innocence of any individual, but with regard to the... ladies and gentlemen, with regard to the question about informing the students, Dr. Labby, I'll let you address that because that's an administrative issue.
Everyone was informed.
Thank you. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? We'll respond to your questions, but you still have a minute left if you have any other comments to make. Okay. Thank you. First of all, I was at the meeting last night. Dr. Labby never indicated the guilt or innocence of any individual, but with regard to the... ladies and gentlemen, with regard to the question about informing the students, Dr. Labby, I'll let you address that because that's an administrative issue.
Everyone was informed.
Thank you. Anyone else for public? Thank you, Mr. Bovary. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? We'll respond to your questions, but you still have a minute left if you have any other comments to make. Okay. Thank you. First of all, I was at the meeting last night. Dr. Labby never indicated the guilt or innocence of any individual, but with regard to the... ladies and gentlemen, with regard to the question about informing the students, Dr. Labby, I'll let you address that because that's an administrative issue.
Everyone was informed.
Thank you. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. Anyone else for public? Thank you. The board of education would like to wait to hear from everyone tonight. However, at the conclusion of this meeting, the board will have an opportunity to, basically, be polled, make any comments, and state an affirmative position from each member as to where we stand on the issue. I'm sorry, your time is up, but thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we have... I'm sorry, ma'am. I'm sorry, ma'am. Ma'am, I'm sorry, your time is up. Ma'am, I'm sorry, your time is... Ma'am? We agree? Ma'am? Ma'am? Ma'am, I'm sorry. Mr. Morgan, if you would assist, please. I'm sorry, your time is up.
If I could just... If I could just remind everyone, obviously, I think many know this, but just to be very clear, this is a public meeting, okay? So we would respectfully request that everybody maintain a respectful level of the forum in this meeting, okay? There's a lot of people out there who want to speak. We want to hear from all of them. Anyone who wants to speak is able to speak, but in order to do that, we have to be respectful of the rules we set tonight. Thank you.
And Mr. Bovary, you've already addressed the board. I'd like to give someone a chance to listen up, please. I'm sorry, but I indicated what the rules were upfront, Mr. Bovary. Thank you. Next, Mr. Bovary? Mr. Bovary? Mr. Bovary? Mr. Bovary, please. Okay? I said it just before. We expect, and we expect from you and everyone else, a... Mr. Bovary, okay? We have officers for that. It's not your job. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Just wait till we get... There we go. Box reset. Yes. Okay. And after the meeting, if you could share that with Dr. Labby and I, we would appreciate that. I want to allow some people to comment, but you... Absolutely, after the meeting, feel free to share that with Dr. Labby. Just, sir, before you respond, I just want to respond to the comments. Dr. Labby and I will take your comments under consideration with regard to a statement of that nature. You are correct. When you look back at the history of this program, and it was cited, the Sandy piece, for example, there are a lot of points of light of the program. And unfortunately, what we find ourselves in right now is a focus on only the darkest days of the program. And I appreciate your feedback, and Dr. Labby and I will take that under consideration and see what we can do to address that piece. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. MacIntosh. Anyone else wish to address the board? Yes, sir. Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for public? I see people coming up the center. Are you coming to speak or...? Oh, okay. Anyone else for public? Anyone wish to address the board? Going once? Going twice? Okay, we will close public at this time then. I will turn it back to the board. There was a question of public and I know that there's also a question of board as well for a formal motion to affirm Dr. Labby's decision to cancel the season. And then we will have board discussion of that motion, so I will ask the board for a motion. I have a motion by Mrs. Bloom.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Walsh. I'll open it up to any board member that wishes to make comment. But before I do that, ladies and gentlemen, we have taken the time to listen to you. We have not spoken during your time. I'm going to ask you to afford the board the same courtesy, even if you hear things that you may not agree with and support. And Varsity. Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, I'll start.
Yes.
Thanks for coming out, everybody. I understand it's an emotional situation and it is not lost on me or this board how hard our players work. I think we ask more of our football players than any program in the state. Double sessions, weightlifting, plyometrics, film study, like they said, six days a week. That's not lost on this board. However, that does not make a serious, substantial, collaborated evidence of bullying, harassment, intimidation, okay. It's not okay. And I've been doing a lot of reading, you know, I'm sure as we all were, and researching. And then one name, you know, a lot of names came up and I started thinking how terrible this is. It is. And it's sad and it's terrible and it's heartbreaking. I hear that, I understand it. But it's not tragic. Tragic would be walking in front of the casket of a victim who decided he couldn't take it anymore. Now, everyone knows of the Tyler Clementi case at Rutgers, someone who couldn't stop the bullying wasn't stopped. Well, you can go to CDC website and there's not a causal link between bullying and suicide, but there is a link. Well, I'm going on with the Middlesex County Prosecutor's information to us is.
Ladies and gentlemen?
I can live with that decision and I support Dr. Labby 100%.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. We listen to all of you. Any other board members with comments? Mack?
I like football. And to me, there's nothing more Americana than Friday night, crisp fall air, watching football. And I'm glad to see that Mr. Hoyt is here today, someone that I always said was a gentleman. I don't know if Mr. Hoyt remembers. I met him at my Georgia Sweet Sixteen party back in 1999. And from that point, I started watching football. I was a fan of football, him and Venezuela, and that's when I started watching Sabres and football ever since. And for those of you, the parents that were there last night, I sit among most of you and I've gone to every bomber game and away game since that day. And I take an older gentleman with me, Ted, who has been watching bomber football games for over thirty years. I've been going through banquets and it was after banquet, Mr. Hoyt, he presented the football, Mr. Mayeja. So there's no greater turmoil within me when I found out what happened. I've lived in town for twenty years and I've had three Sabre bomber athletes that graduated here in 2001, 2006, and 2009. And I'm on the Board of Education, not because I like to go to parades and cover arenas. I'm on the Board of Education because I believe in education. I believe in the school board, which is going to have three young ladies at home that are very well accomplished for what they did in these programs in academics and involved in sports. So it's with a heavy heart that I got an email on Thursday morning that said that the zip game this evening was in jeopardy. And I was kind of stunned, at a town like Sabre, that we wouldn't even think about the football program being in jeopardy. So I said to myself, what the hell happened? For something like this to be done? I know from the meeting last night, there's a missing piece of information that the county prosecutor told Dr. Labby he cannot discuss. I'll go back to Labby, notice the specifics. He was told by the county prosecutor, you cannot talk about this. This is not an incident that the school board or the school district found out about and restarted an investigation, then we called the police department. The police department notified us that, hey, we're investigating a serious problem within the football program. And it's my understanding, my knowledge is limited. Probably some of you may know more about the specifics than I. But when they started to investigate it, they came across something that said, we better call the Middlesex County Prosecutor's office for criminal investigation. And I am not a cop. I don't certainly play one on TV, so I don't know how that works, but I know that the county prosecutor's office doesn't waste their resources unless they think there's something credible there. So I had to start thinking about this. And a lot of people in town have come to me, and I was at a function this weekend and we dedicated something. And people asked me, why do you do this, Mike? What's in it for you? And I said, well, if it's not me, who? Who? Now, for some of you who don't know me, for the past fifteen years, I've been working in a high school, I work with high school students. And I'm familiar with this HIB thing because I've seen it work. And the reason HIB came out is because the students have been bullied, as we all know, and in extreme cases have taken their own lives, or came back to school on a subsequent day and took revenge. So the state said, we have to get our hands around this. We need to get ahead of this. So they came out with this toolbox, if you will, that they've given us as a school district to try to take control of this. And what's in my classroom and in every classroom in my building, there's a pledge that all the students sign that says, we pledge to stand up whenever we see anything, anybody being harassed, intimidated, or whatever. Because this is serious business and the state has given Dr. Labby and superintendents throughout this whole state a legal statute in which to operate with a bentness for our young people. Now, I had parents, and for the last couple of days, since Thursday, when I got that email, I did a lot of listening to people. Because I never learned anything when I was talking, so I decided to listen. And what I was hearing from people was that, you know, what is going to be done about this? What about the victims and all these types of things? Now, I had other people tell me, you know, Mike, that football's an aggressive sport. You know, we fire up people to do battle on the gridiron and I respect that, the adrenaline's flowing. But I can tell you that I spent the career of my life in a profession where I was around a lot of pastoral laden, aggressive, tough guys. And we never did anything to us or to others as any kind of riot or any kind of bullying in order to wear my uniform. And I'm here to tell you, as long as I was sitting in this Board of Education, not one Sabre student is going to have to endure anything in order to wear a bomber uniform. That's my pledge, because I have a legal and a moral responsibility to every parent in this room to kind of guarantee you that your son and daughter can walk the halls of any building in this school district and be free of any harassment and bullying and have the rights, not the privilege, but the right to an education, to live and learn in an environment that's free of any of that crap. And I have an obligation to ensure that. Now, you heard a lot of rumors that were possibly... I don't know what went on in that locker room. And I'm not going to dance around and I'm not going to play any games and mince words. Something happened in that locker room that the county prosecutor decided, there's a criminal investigation. I'm sitting Saturday and I pick up the Star Ledger and I read an article titled, Sources Hazing Spawns Fear at Sabre. And it's quoted by a freshman parent that says, the freshmen stampede to the locker room after practice and try to get dressed before the senior players enter. What kind of hell is going on in that locker room that our freshmen are afraid to go in there?
Ladies and gentlemen?
That are afraid...
Ladies and gentlemen?
I don't know what's true and I don't know... This is not my words. This is just information that's coming to me and I have to gather information to make an informed decision. I can't shoot from the hip. I got to make my own decisions. I'm not afraid to make a decision. So when I woke up this morning, I wasn't looking forward to coming to this meeting. When I woke up this morning, I had to make a choice. Who do I want to be pissed off at? The football community that I sit among for years and watch the pride in the parents and watching the bombers do their thing? Do I want those people to be mad at me? Or do I want the victims or their parents to be mad at me? So what do I do? What do I do? I have to make a decision. So I decided that I will follow my moral compass. And I made the decision that there's something going on that the county prosecutor, not me, not my words, not Dr. Alfano's words, the county prosecutor's office has said is pervasive and widespread. Okay? So I have to make my decision based on that. So I support the decision that Dr. Alfano...
Ladies and gentlemen?
That Dr. Labby made. Because I have to ensure that this doesn't happen. Now, what really hit home to me was on Sunday, when an eighth grade parent came to me and said, my kid is in eighth grade and he wants to play football next year. So what do they have to endure? What do they have to go through to put on a Sabre bomber uniform? So that's the question that I have to deal with and I have to make a decision. But I have to make a decision. I can't walk away from it. I can't do what's most popular, it's to make everybody happy with me. I'm basing it based on the information I have, and I think that this community, and I think people last night that were here, that when the prosecutor releases the evidence they have, that it's not going to be a good scenario.
Ladies and gentlemen? Ladies and gentlemen? Excuse me.
The board president has warned you a number of times. Please, for the sake of this meeting, for the sake of this community, can you please provide the appropriate form of respect? Thank you. Excuse me. There's a point in this meeting, I'm going to remind the public, there's a point in this meeting where there's members of the public who are causing a disruption to a public meeting. And that's not something that you want to have happen. There are officers here who would be happy if the board directed them to remove you. So I, again, respectfully request that you keep appropriate gourm in this room or the board will have to take action. Thank you.
And that doesn't mean I'm not empathetic to parents that advocate for their children. But I'm in a position, I have to advocate for success. And I make my decision with a heavy heart with someone that supports this program. I even, and two years ago, I along with another individual established a scholarship and we fund a scholarship every year that we give to a Sabre bomber senior.
Ladies and gentlemen?
Well, you know, you have a right, you want to do that, that's fine, but I think I owe you the rationale behind the decision that I'm making. I don't make this a decision as someone who's not concerned about our program, because I understand the value of organized sports and secondary education. But what happened in the locker room, and there's people that know what happened in that locker room. And the county prosecutor, it's hearsay perhaps, but the county prosecutor has thought there was enough information from witnesses that they interviewed that a criminal investigation is warranted. So what am I supposed to do?
Ladies and gentlemen?
Officers, officers.
Okay. That's all right. I'm done. Thank you.
Are there any other board members that wish to make comments?
I would like to say that. My priorities, basically there are three. And the safety and the welfare of the students is my top priority. Education is right behind it. And extracurriculars, they're very important, but to me, it's like the icing on the cake. It's the education and it's the safety and well-being of the students. And I support Dr. Labby's.
Any other board members with comments?
I will just offer some closing remarks. This has been an absolute nightmare. It's been a nightmare for us. I know it's been a nightmare for the players, for the coaches, for the parents, for the football family, and for our community and the Sabre public schools as a whole. I am very appreciative of the parent that spoke and advised us that in our press statements, we need to comment that not all is bad, that we do have good kids. Maybe there are some who made a bad mistake, but we do overall have good kids. I agree with you. I think that message is getting lost in this process. And unfortunately, what happened on the football team is reflective of the entire Sabre community. And I appreciate that feedback and I think we need to make sure that the press knows that there is a lot of pride in this community and it's pride for the right reasons. That being said, when you look at what happened, and again, forget the criminality piece, forget guilty, innocent, when you look at the county prosecutor who has all of the data on this, who is saying that acts have occurred of harassment, intimidation, and bullying that were pervasive, ongoing, widespread, and generally accepted, that to me indicates that we have a problem within the program that we need to correct because that is not consistent with our culture. And I think this is an opportunity for us to execute a reset, to refocus back on the full meaning of our priorities, to make sure that no student ever finds themselves in a situation where they may have to wait a year or two to report something like this. It's a sad situation to be in, but I really believe that at the end of the day, when we come back next year, and make no mistake, ladies and gentlemen, we're not talking about canceling our football program, we're not talking about barring every single student from ever playing again, but when we come back next year, it will be with a stronger sense of commitment and character. It will be with a stronger purpose. And I believe that this community will rally behind this program better than it ever has before, in support of our students and in support of us doing the right thing.
If there are no other comments, I will ask Mr. DeAndrea for a roll call.
Officer?
I'm asking Mr. DeAndrea for a roll call right now. You will have a roll call vote as to how each member votes yes or no regarding the motion to support Dr. Labby's decision to cancel the balance of the 2014 freshman JV and varsity football season. Mr. DeAndrea, the roll call.
Mr. Valman?
Yes.
Mr. Backer?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Budger?
Yes.
Mr. Patain? Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Trapp?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
And Mr. Fox?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, if there's no other business, I will take a motion to adjourn. So moved. By Mr. Walsh, do I have a second? By Mrs. Strapp. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry.